The Funding and Zoning Commission is a citizens advisory group to the city council. They are charged with making recommendations concerning land use plans, planning processes, and/or on matters of plan implementation. All regular meetings of the PNC Commission are recorded for record retention and transcription. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. In the event of a hearing, any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. Oral testimony may be restricted to no more than three minutes per person. Agenda item number one: Roll call and disclosure of conflict of interest, ex parte, communication, and site visit. Disclose? Excuse me.
Yeah, you don't need to, she doesn't need to read all of them. Yes.
She does have to read that disclosure.
We do? Okay. All right, disclose who was talked to, the basic substance of the conversation and whether the conversation had any influence. Disclose if there's any personal, personally or professionally, that would not allow an impartial or unbiased decision. Disclose if a site visit was done, locations or locations of the site visit and what was seen. Take the roll, please.
Jill Kirkham?
Present. What other information would you like?
If you did a site visit to the...
I did site visits to all of the locations.
And if you have any disclosures?
I think that I need to disclose that I'm very good friends with many of these people that have made complaints and I'd like to remove myself from that, please. Is that correct? Am I correct about that?
The only reason you would exclude yourself would be if you cannot make an unbiased decision to this...
I don't think that I can make an unbiased decision. On numbers for...
Anyone else?
No, I'll go through the roll calls. Just let me get, let me just...
Okay.
Jack Moore?
Hello, I'm Jack Moore and I live in the Alltown District. I made site visits to Agenda Items 3, 4, 5, and 6. And I did run into Kaylee while I was at Site Number Agenda Item 3. And we just talked about that it would need some grading. And that was the extent of the conversation.
Dorothy Ricks?
I have nothing else to disclose.
Yes, my name is Dorothy Ricks. I am from the Alameda area. I have made no site visits on any of these areas except for regular site visits during the timeframe as a citizen of Pocatello, but I've made no specific visits per se to every street.
Okay, I'm sorry. It was very hard for me to hear you made site visits to all of the Agenda Items and you have nothing else to report?
That's great.
Okay, thank you. Sheng Tiu Ru?
My name is Sheng Tiu Ru. I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number 3, Number 4, Number 5, and Number 6, and I have nothing else to disclose. And I live in the Highland area.
Kaylee White?
My name is Kaylee White. I live in the Alameda area. I did make a site visit to the following Agenda Items. I have nothing further to disclose.
Okay. Staff members present, Matthew Lewis, Elise Lynn McCullough, and Merrill Hoyt.
Agenda Item Number 2: Approval of the Minutes. The commission may wish to approve the minutes from clarification and regular meetings on the June 24, 2020 meeting.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
The motion has been approved and seconded.
Moore?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item 3: Public Hearing. Zoning map and comprehensive plan amendment. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by H7 Ventures, represented by Creek Hollow and Associates, to rezone property located north of the Crossing Division 2 subdivision from commercial property to residential commercial professional and amend the comprehensive plan from commercial to mixed use. Okay. Will the applicants please come forward and give their presentation? Their 10-minute limit is allowed.
Can everybody hear me okay? I'm Chris Adams for pre-call, and I'm here representing H7 Ventures. And tonight, we're just requesting a rezone of approximately 33 acres. This area was zoned commercial general previously from the previous landowners and development group, Portent Development. And H7 Ventures is looking to develop this property, and they just are requesting that rezone to mixed use, RCP zone, and to reduce the commercial general zone that's currently there. They have plans to develop the property more of a residential professional format than the large amount of commercial property that was previously zoned. That's really all I have for you, unless you have any other questions for me.
Any questions? All right, will staff please come forward?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission Members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the City of Pocatello. Justin Hale of H7 Ventures, represented by Creek Hollow and Associates, Inc., has submitted a zoning map and comprehensive plan land use map amendment application to rezone a 34.33-acre more-or-less parcel from the existing commercial general to residential commercial professional. Proposed zone change requires a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan map, comprehensive plan land use map to mixed use from the current commercial designation. Subject property is located within the North Gate Development Area, north of the Crossings Division 2 subdivision and west of Olympus Drive. The zoning map amendment application has been initiated pursuant to Municipal Code Section 1702.180. The subject property was annexed into the City of Pocatello corporate boundary in February of 2018 and received the zoning designation of CG with the accompanying comprehensive map designation of commercial. As detailed in the report, the applicant is requesting the rezone, to rezone the property to RCP with the accompanying mixed use comprehensive plan map designation. The subject property, again, comprises 34.33 acres, is undeveloped and is predominantly flat. The area is still developing in character, and there is no land use developments in this area. Properties to the west and the south are zoned RCP, and the property to the east is zoned commercial general. All property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be rezoned have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the proposed zoning and concurrent comp plan map change. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal and assigned with post-zone subject properties. No comments either written or by phone have been received by staff of drafting of the staff presentation at 3:30 August 12, 2020. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Matt?
The only question I have is I drove by the property and did not see a sign. I wasn't sure if there was a specific where you had it.
I did not put the sign up personally, so...
I know where it is. It's right on the corner of the roundabout. So as you're going, you know where the roundabout is, right on that corner. It's predominantly placed right there.
I may have missed it going around the roundabout. Thank you.
Yeah, if you're doing 70, you might have missed it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we will begin our testimony. We have a three-minute time limit. First, I'm going to ask for testimony by those supporting the application. Then by ask for testimony by those who are uncommitted. And then third, ask for testimony by those opposed to the application. So we begin with number one. Is there anyone who is testifying to support the application? We'd like to hear it.
I'm Don Zeeby at 465 Barrett, Pocatello, Idaho. I'm in support of this application. Previously, when they put the plan together, it was set aside to be a commercial development for a lot of retail. Well, since the demise of the country overall and the growth of retail in the area, it makes a lot of sense to rezone the property to an RCP zoning to provide greater flexibility in doing some retail, commercial, and professional development in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Zee. Anyone else? Any testimony from those uncommitted on the application? I hear no testimony. Ask for testimony for those opposed to the application. Anyone opposed? I'll give a few minutes.
I'll say the closing public hearing.
Okay. I've been advised as seeing none that I close the public hearing at this particular time. Here's the gavel. Hey, that's my gavel. Great gavel. I declare the public hearing closed. This item, commission, this item is before you. Have you wished to proceed?
I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the application from H7 Ventures to rezone the property in question, located north of the Crossings 2 subdivision and west of Olympus Drive, to rezone residential, commercial, professional, and amend the comprehensive plan planned use map to mixed use planning. The application does need the standards for approval under Chapter 1702.170 of Pocatello Municipal Code. I have the conditions presented by staff for that.
And have the chair assign the findings of that?
Please note for the chair to sign the findings of that.
Very good. I'll second it. Everybody for a second?
Do you want me to pinch you up standing?
I'm only going to stand.
Perfect.
I'll second it.
Who wants it? You, you were first.
She may have made the motion.
Made the motion? Yes, okay, there. And your second motion? Your motion has been... Would you take the vote?
White?
Yes.
Kirkham?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Ru?
Yes.
Motion carries. Can you come over here?
What do you want?
I would go to the next one. Are you ready? Second. Four?
Number four?
Is it four? Pardon me. Now are they finding I'm coming back or they're just leaving?
No, they're done.
Agenda item number four? A public hearing.
Annexation.
Annexation, excuse me. All right. This item has been set aside for the commission to hear comment from the public regarding a request by Bill Isley of B Street Investments, represented by RMES, to annex and zone approximately 7.56 acres of land at the end of Vista Drive. The requested zone is residential medium density, single family, or RMS. Okay, there we go. No, can I play with it?
May we please have a presentation from the applicant?
Thank you, Bill Isley, B Street Investments. I guess this one on this end is easiest. The 7.56 acres is the piece here in blue, which is an extension of Vista, which comes up here, and it will have an intersection in it that is Center Street, but eventually we'll go back here. It's part of a 200-acre parcel that Empire Investments has owned for years. They own this part in green, and the part over here in blue is also, is on an option that I have, but we're just talking about the 7.56 acres. It will be residential, and the lot sizes will exceed the minimum that it's allowed. The number of lots will be less than half what the zoning ordinance would allow for that size of parcel. And I developed all of that land up there that you see over the last 20 years. I live in the area and have lived there for 20 years. So I want to rezone this, build this space, and I'm very interested in trying to make the connection of Center Street over to Vista, which will be very, very good for the city and for the neighborhood, for police, fire, ambulance, providing services, all those things. We meet all six of the conditions that the code sets out for annexation, and we would ask you to annex this piece of property as a RMS zone. And I'll speak later or now, whichever you prefer, on the comments that have been received.
I guess we can, should we resume those later or do you have any need to have those now?
Ask the commission if they have questions.
Does the commission have any questions at this point? Okay. Now let's do the presentation by staff, if we may.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commission Members. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with the City. As noted in the Agenda Item, Bill Isley, B Street Investment LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted an application to annex and zone 7.56 acres more-or-less of land located at the east end of Vista Drive. The proposed zoning for the property is residential medium density, single family, or RMS, in a concurrent comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential. The annexation request is in statutory compliance with Idaho State Code 50-222.3A-I as a Category 8 annexation, which allows annexation to take place where all private landowners have consented to annexation. As proposed, the subject property is within the adopted areas of the impact and lies contiguous to the City of Pocatello limits at the westmost property line. The applicant, Bill Isley of B Street Investments LLC, is the property owner of the subject 7.56 acres. The existing land uses adjacent to the subject property are developed with residential uses or are currently vacant. The properties immediately to the north and the west are vacant and undeveloped. The aforementioned properties are located outside of the City of Pocatello and zone residential suburban in Banta County. The property adjacent to the east and south are accessed from Vista Drive are zoned residential medium density, single family, which is the same zoning designation that is proposed as part of the requested annexation. Surrounding land uses are currently predominantly developed with single-family homes. The proposed residential density is compatible with the adjacent residential uses to the east and south. The RMS zoning district requires a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet per single-family home. Lot sizes on the north side of the extension of Vista Drive range in size from 7,698 square feet to 11,919 square feet, with an average being approximately 9,087 square feet in size. Lot sizes on the south of Vista range in size from 9,398 square feet to 11,921 square feet, with the average being approximately 9,416 square feet in area. The average lot size fronting the extension of center covers approximately 10,645 square feet in size. Based on the, based on the proposed 7.56 acres to be annexed and corresponding zoning designation of RMS and slope disturbance, a total of 45 single-family lots may be platted. In this case, the developer is proposing to plat 27 residential lots. Again, the proposed zoning of RMS is consistent with the Tuscany Hills development to the east, and the resulting residential development is typical of land use pattern within the surrounding area. The subject property is currently vacant, and the topography is characterized by slopes that exceed 15% places at both the north and south portions of the property to be annexed. Based on the preliminary slope analysis provided, the proposed density will be met, and all applicable slope development standards will apply. The applicant will need a variance to the site disturbance standards listed in Pocatello Municipal Code 1705.140 in order to build up the lots as currently designed by the applicant. This is being considered in a separate application and will be before the Pocatello hearing examiner tomorrow evening. Pollinered water and fire flow currently extend through the property and are adequate to serve the future development. Sewer service is available to be extended from Vista Drive. The property is located within the City of Pocatello area of City Impact. The subject property does not currently have a land use designation on the comprehensive land use map. The adjacent property to the west is designated as residential within the city comprehensive plan land use map and zoned RMS. A list of land use goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan supporting the annexation are outlined in the staff report. All notified, all property owners within a 300-foot radius of the land to be rezoned have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comment on the proposed annexation application and zoning concurrent comp plan map designation. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal and assigned post on the subject property. As of the completion of the staff report, since, as of completion of the staff report, there were no public comments or phone calls received. Since that time, staff received 25 written comments at the time and one comment that was by phone. The commission has those comments in hand. With that, that concludes staff presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions in the air.
Any questions?
I have a question with regards to the staff, with regards to any concerns over traffic or... So if you look at the comments or can we, if you look at the public comments, a lot of concerns were with regards to kind of the bottleneck effect at the lower part of Vista. Has there, do you have kind of, kind of assessment of...
Was there a traffic study done?
Yeah. Has there been traffic studies done to kind of better assess the situation?
There currently has been no traffic on this particular, for here. However, I'd like to note out that when this first came in and started up Vista, that there was discussion and plans implemented where Vista is actually an 80-foot right-of-way until you get up to the hotels. It was designed for more of a collector arterial street. From there going up, from there up, it's 56 feet wide. Our tipicals are 50, so it's still wider to accommodate, a little bit wider, a little faster traffic and so forth. The plans are that Vista will tie into Center Street at the top and eventually will have that intersection and that secondary access, just like any other development that we have in town as it's planned out. And we see that sometimes it takes a little longer than we wish, but it typically always gets there and follows that plan. As far as traffic at the bottom, and they say, well, put a signal in. The answer to that is, is that we know that there's congestion at certain parts of peak hours and so forth, but still it does not, at this time, doesn't warrant that we can see where it warrants a signal or anything there. The other thing to that is, is you don't want to put a signal right there. We've got one on the interchange, and we've got one on Hospital Way. We don't want to end up what happened out on Yellowstone, where we've got so many traffic signals that now you can't time them, and it just becomes more of a mess, and they're trying to figure that one out so they can take signals away. So we understand that there is a bottleneck at certain times of the hour when everybody's trying to get to work because they're all late and, you know, planning that out. Unfortunately, that it doesn't lend to having, having another signal or anything there. So what we've got to do is continue to, to work towards getting that connection up to Center Street with economics and the economy and so forth. So this is one more step closer to making that connection possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this particular juncture?
Unfortunately, that it doesn't lend to having another signal or anything there. So what we've got to do is continue to work towards getting that connection up to Center Street with economics and the economy and so forth. So this is one more step closer to making that connection possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this particular juncture?
I guess my only concern is, I understand that the foresight, the vision of Vista connecting to Center. I mean, my only concern would be the lower connection of Vista and Center. But if it isn't warrant a traffic study then I guess we're okay.
Very good.
How are your dress correspondence? So now you have your testimony.
Okay. Now we're going to go into testimony. We have a three-minute time limit. So now I'm going to ask for testimony of those supporting the application. I declare the public meeting now open for testimony supporting the application. None? Ask for testimony for those who are uncommitted to the application. Testimony by those opposed to the application. Time for rebuttal? Excuse me. Okay. I now close the public meeting at this particular time. Go on to the next one. Discussion amongst commission members at this particular time?
I recommend approval of the application. Motion to recommend approval of the application from B Street Investments LLC to annex the property in question. Located at the east of Vista Drive to be zoned residential medium density, single-family and a comprehensive plan land use map designation of residential as requested, finding the application does meet the standard for approval under Chapter 17.02.110 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions listed in the staff report.
Second?
Have the chair sign the findings of that.
And have the chair sign off on once the conditions have been satisfied by the applicant.
Ready for me to take off? Yes, I'm sorry. Room?
Yes.
Right? Yes, more? Yes. Bricks? Yes. Motion barriers? Very good. Now we should go on to number five. And this is preliminary plat, high terrace, Division 1. Bill Isley, represented by RMS, has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide approximately 7.56 acres of land into 27 residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located at the end of Vista Drive. May we now hear our presentation from the applicant?
Thank you, Bill Isley, B Street Investments, Pocatello, Idaho. On the place of property that we just brought into the city, we would like to build a residential subdivision with 27 lots. It's on the street now. The lot sizes will average over 9,000 square feet. And it will be an extension of Vista up to Center Street or the future Center Street. The water lines already in both of those areas have been in for quite a while. This development is not the type of development that we've done in the past so much where we develop lots and then sell them to builders or to individuals who then go in and build their own home. And it's important that I mention that because of what I'm going to bring up here in just a minute. When, under the hillside ordinance, when you just developed lots, it was very important, and Ryan and I were both involved in that back in the day, putting together the code and the comprehensive plan, it was important to have some undisturbed area, we thought, based on the percentage slope of the ground. And that was because you would sell the lot and then whoever bought the lot could do whatever they wanted. So there was no restriction you could put on effectively. And so by having the extra ground and the restrictions on slope, it gave the city some control because then they could require an engineer design the basement, for instance, or the footings. Well, what I've determined is it's better in the hillside for one developer, one builder, to build it all up. And the reason I come to that is that drainage runoff is a very important issue. And when you have everybody doing what they want, now the city is up there trying to coordinate 27 builders to make sure the water goes where they want it to go and then somebody goes out and does something different and changes it anyway. In this particular case, if you look at that map, right there you see that there are no grade lines up in this area. Under the existing code, it would say, oh, you can't go in that area and disturb the ground when you build the subdivision. Well, that's just really, really foolish in this case because that ground has no trees, no nothing on it. And if you don't disturb it and then you sell it, the guy that builds his house there is going to go up and do whatever he wants and totally change and change the grading and the runoff and everything. So what I want to do is this area here and this area here and those two areas, there are some areas of mature juniper trees that you can see really well from I-15 and from Pocatello Creek. What I would rather do is go in and build some reverse walls that have the finish side pointing towards Pocatello Creek or towards the freeway that protect the junipers. And so the lot will grade down to the top of the wall, but then you leave around the trees naturally. Well, what's important to make it work is that you also have a deed restriction when you sell the lot and the house, that that can't be changed. Otherwise, the guy buys the house, goes in, knocks the wall down and cuts the trees down. I think it will be very attractive looking at this development instead of just seeing a bunch of grading, seeing some walls and the trees retained. And so I want to do that. And the next and most important thing, we're going to put up another screen and it's going to call, it's going to say conceptual profile view. Now, this screen in the very center is Vista Street. So that's the profile of the road that's going to be going up. Now, on the right-hand side is what we would call the uphill side where the slope goes up. That green line is the existing terrain. You can see that from the street where the house is going to be, the house is going to be right in there. When I built the house, I gained nine feet. See, I gained 11 altogether, two feet in the driveway, nine feet for the back wall of the foundation. So I'm up 11 feet. Now I go to the property line, and this is the most important part. I put a fence on the property line, come in, and then I sloped down on a two-to-one slope, then put a four-foot wall, come out and down again. And now I have created a big backyard that's usable and I've controlled how the back is going to be developed and graded. Now I can do that in mass grading during construction of the subdivision. With the big equipment, it's easy to get that material and move it and you'll notice on the other side of the street, you need extra material from the green line up in order to make that balance out really well and work. So what we do is we create bigger lots, nicer lots. We control all the drainage, we protect the trees. We can't do that if we don't build the whole development out. If you just ask somebody to do it, well, protect those trees, maybe they will, maybe they won't. But when we control the development and build it, we can do that. So now we have nicer lots and lots that don't have great big mounds of dirt in the backyard that somebody does something with, tries to. It's already finished. The fences are in place. And it makes for a much, much nicer development. So that's what my concept is here. I've been developing a long time. And this is the second one I'm kind of doing this on, but this is the first one I'm all-in on, that I'm just going to do it what I think is the way that it should be done. It'll protect the areas that need to be protected. It'll give bigger yards, it'll control the drainage, it'll do the whole thing. See, I'm old now, I'm 72. And this is, I swore the last one was, but I lied. This is the last development. And it is going to be a very, very nice one. And when we get across to Center Street, everybody on that mountain is going to be very happy. Even the lady that accused me of being a sardine maker. So that's what I want to do and I hope you guys jump in and say, go ahead and go and get her done, Bill. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioned Members. I don't have much to add because in my previous agenda item, I gave quite a bit of detail. None of that has really changed in terms of lot sizes and so forth. I'll just say for the record that the application is for preliminary plat for 27 lots to be known as high terrace subdivision. One other item I'd like to add that I did in the previous staff presentation was that the lots proposed both exceed the RMS and residential load density. So even if the property were to be zoned with a designation of RL, the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. And all the lots that are proposed, they're even beyond that. So it's just some information for the commission. Staff has reviewed the preliminary plat. It meets all the standards under code. And there are three conditions that are being recommended if the commission were to approve the plat that's before you. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Okay. At this particular juncture, we shall. Any comments, any discussion amongst the commission?
I have a question for the applicant. So you have no intention of like raising the whole mountain and just flattening it?
Excuse me?
You not have no plans to like really change the topography of the mountain? Just do the minimal and get the what you want built and?
No, that's the exact opposite of what I want to do. I don't want to do the minimal and leave it to where it gets just haphazard. I want to develop the whole thing, grade the whole thing and build every house, every yard, every fence. So it'll be completed development.
That wasn't really my question. It was more about the natural habitat of the mountain and the hill. You want to leave as much of it natural as possible. Is that?
And I don't want to mislead. I definitely want to leave the mature trees and the things that I think are valuable and protect them for all time. And the stuff that, that hillside I was just pointing to is nothing. There's not even sagebrush on it, let alone a tree. And it's just begging for somebody to come in and screw it up. And I don't want to see that happen because I live there and I walk there every day. I'll be an excellent caretaker of that entire 100 acres.
Do we have that writing?
Excuse me?
I'm being facetious.
It's on record.
It will be in writing.
It'll be in writing.
Not a problem.
So a question for the staff. So this email, once again, thank you, thanks, thank you to the applicant who sent out this email. I'm just wondering, did the staff receive any response to this email or any follow-up? It seems the applicant did send an explanation letter email to all those who were, who wrote comments. I'm wondering if there were any responses there. Also, there, I think there needs to be a little clarity. I'm just kind of, Matthew, you mentioned that there were 25 written comments and one phone call.
Yes.
And the email, if I count correctly, has been sent to 20 email addresses. So was there overlap of?
There was more than, like I said, when I, when I, my report, my presentation was done like at 3:36 or something like that. We had 20, I counted 25, and I think we got an additional three. And Bill sent the mass, probably the 20. So we received, at this point, I'm going to say 28 is what we received. As far as, no, we didn't, I didn't make any, usually you do not send any type of response back. That's why you have, have a public hearing for at least the annexation part of it. Of course, with the plat and so forth, that's not a public hearing. So really, the comments would be in response to the annexation.
Okay, so all the comments were with regards to the annexation?
Yes, because there's no public hearing for the plat.
Okay. So I guess, once again, just reflect, no one responded, I guess, even to, I guess, even if the emails were related to, I guess, the previous agenda? So there was no comments, follow-up?
The only, the only response that we had was when we received, when we received correspondence or the written correspondence, Aisling sent back to them, please be advised that we've received your written comment.
Not from you guys, I mean, did anyone reply to?
No.
No one has replied?
No.
He's asking if anybody responded to ride.
They have.
To you, to you.
Yes, they did not reply to the calls at the city. I just sent out an email to them letting them know that his response was also going to be included in the public comments. So they were all aware and understood and knew that that was going to be included. And they all had the opportunity to come here and voice any other concerns they had.
When I answered, I sent it to everyone that I had. I did the email back to Dr. Gottfried and then I copied that and sent it to all 25 or however many people had put anything in, I sent it directly to them.
Thank you.
Do we have a copy of that?
Yes.
Yes.
I have copies of all the correspondence.
We ready for motion? I move to recommend approval for the preliminary plat application from Bill Isley of B Street Investments for high terrace subdivision one, subdivision division one, finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions of approval made by staff, and please have those noted by the chair.
I'm going to slacken that more. I'm sorry, what? Was there a second?
Jack's second.
Thank you. Ready for your role? Yes, please. White?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Pass.
Oh. Bricks?
Yes.
Epstein?
Yes.
We now go down to item, agenda item number six, preliminary plat Crestview Estates Division Three. Ryan Satterfield, represented by RMES, has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide approximately 13.48 acres of land into 24 residential lots. The proposed subdivision is located, located south of Monson Street and northeast of Mariah Way. Would the applicant come forward at this particular time and give their presentation?
Very good. Good evening, Commissioners. I didn't think when I came, I'm Ryan Satterfield, Satterfield Realty and Development, 3141 Trevor Street. I'm saying, I didn't think I would be sitting up here and you guys would be sitting here.
Still, you're still up there.
All right. Here we are, though. So tonight, we are doing our third edition of the Crestview Estates, proposing a preliminary plat for that. There are actually 22 buildable lots, and then we originally proposed two lots that were considered non-buildable. As one of the conditions in here, it does discuss one of those lots, the Lot 15, being removed from the plat, and after looking into that and discussing with staff, we're in agreeance with that, that that's an okay move to take that out. And then the other non-buildable lot is basically what we call a goalie lot, just kind of hillside area that we dedicate for open space. It has a nice biking trail that's currently running through it. We allow people to access through the property as long as they obey the rules, and that goalie area down through there to the south of the subdivision gets used quite frequently and has become a very nice feature for the area, and so we want to preserve that. But we will plan to put in these additional 22 lots, wrapping Monson Street, or sorry, Legacy Street around and tying it in with Mariah Way. The only other thing I guess I wanted to present, our lot sizes are well above the required minimums, and so there shouldn't be any concern there. With the slope analysis that was done, I've also discussed some of this with staff and some of the verbiage in the staff conditions as far as requirements and whatnot for when building permits are submitted. Our intention would be to go through, and much like what Bill Isley was saying, I do agree with his concept of getting a subdivision set up and having someone that is overseeing how all of the drainage is working. That tends to work best when, at the subdivision development stage, the lots are set up to handle the storm waters that's coming down, and that can require more site disturbance than what we might have done previously, when we would develop previously. So in this map, it is showing that there is a seven-acre proposed disturbance, but maximum of 12.37 allowed based on the hillside ordinance. And so I guess I would just ask for some flexibility, that we will likely go above that seven that it's proposing here. This is just a rough grading plan. When we get into our final and actually set up the sites and whatnot, it will likely go over the seven acres that it is stating here, but we will stay under that 12.37. That won't be an issue. Especially those three lots that start falling down into the ravine, there are things that we can do that our engineers will help oversee, that will make those very nice lots and make them so that, you know, there shouldn't be any concerns with the slope there. And then the back portions of those lots are just left natural and have trees, and like I say, behind that is a trail system. So that is, I guess, all I have for you, unless there are questions that you have for me.
Any questions for the applicant at this time?
So the two lots that are non-buildable is 15, and then which one was the goalie lot?
Lot one of Block Three. The one the furthest south.
Okay.
All right, staff, would you please come forward at this time and give your presentation?
Good evening, Mab Chair, Commission Members, Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner. As noted, the proposed subdivision encompasses 13.48 acres. Property is zoned residential low density, which is consistent with the surrounding properties. This designation requires a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. The smallest lot proposed measures 13,585 square feet. Legacy Drive will be extended south and then west to interconnect with Mariah Way. New road proposed to be named Autumn Promote Rain Road will extend east off of Legacy Drive. Keegan Court will be extended southeast approximately 323 feet extending in a cul-de-sac. As noted, the topical slope for portions of the proposed subdivision, specifically for lots two through four of Block Three, exceed 15% and are therefore subject to the slope development standards. Based on the slope analysis, the maximum site disturbance permitted is 12.37 acres of the 13.59 acre subdivision. Sounds like the applicant will be well below that. The applicant proposes that stormwater from the project will be detained west of the project and ponds constructed in Crestview Estates Division One and Two. In the event, the commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat with conditions. Staff has outlined those for your consideration, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mab. We appreciate that very much. Is there any written correspondence that needs to be or has been submitted for record?
There's none.
All right. Now we go into testimony section.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, that's a rock, it's on us. Okay. Rebuttal? No, you didn't rebuttal because there's nobody talking. We'll go into the gavel.
No. You want to see, ask the commission. There's discussion. Any discussion?
Oh. Does the commission have a discussion for any of the items at this particular time?
Or a motion.
Or a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application from Ryan Satterfield of Satterfield Realty and Development for Crestview Estates Division Three, finding that the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of Pocatello Municipal Code with the conditions of approval from staff, are recommended by staff.
I second the motion.
White?
Yes.
Rue?
Yes.
Kirkman?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Bricks?
Yes.
Motion carries? We are now concluding our meeting of August the 12th of 2020. Thank you for attending.